Call tonight's meeting order, roll call please.
Trustee Hargit.
Here.
Trustee Levin.
Here.
Trustee Mervola. Oops, trustee McCarthy.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Trustee Whitmore.
Here.
Mayor Burrow.
Here. Please stand for tonight's invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be provided by J.C. Crawford, pastor, J.T. Crawford, of Point Church.
Point Church, yes. I do too.
I do too. Thank you.
Well, Heavenly Father, we thank you for gathering us all here today to talk about the drawings on in the village. And I pray, Lord, that our hearts and minds are open to your leading, that we have a productive meeting, that all of the issues can be taken care of. And I thank you for all of the members here. I thank you for the hard heart of the police to protect our city and our state. And, Lord, I just want to lift up the Robards family, the recent passing of Dick Robards. We thank you for his service. He provided a long, longtime service to this village and he was looked upon very favorably. So, Lord, just look after him and take care of his family. I just want to lift them up, that you would comfort them and build people around them to take care of them as well. And, Lord, this is all in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we're going to move right down. We have no minutes from previous meetings. We're going to go right down to Mayor's report. I need a motion to approve the proclamation proclaiming April 9th through April 15th, 2023, as national public safety telecommunications.
Certainly.
During the second week of April, emergency dispatchers are recognized and appreciated for their critical role in emergency response. They are the first responders who answer emergency calls and provide information to help make informed decisions before the arrival of other emergency personalities. Now, what the Parvot community would like to express our sincere gratitude to all emergency dispatchers for their service to our community. Roll call.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. I'm going to skip to or wait for one more trustee to show up solidly. Minister has your part.
Just a few things. We're going to be discussing some of the major things that we've been working on, vehicle replacement and vehicle replacement funding and also funding for some facilities maintenance that has been in place for a few years. Second, the other thing that we're going to be working on is we're going to be presenting a proposal to how to move forward with Zero Russell Road, a vehicle piece of property that the village owns. And that's something that we'll be bringing to the board at the next meeting, different options of what we can do with that piece of land. Right now, it's vacant. And I'll just comment on other things that are on the agenda when the item comes up for discussion there.
Okay. Which parcel of Zero Russell Road?
Yeah, decent.
Okay.
It's a little bit a lot.
Yeah.
Number of best candidates.
Thank you, Dave. Parks Correspondents? We'll move on to new business committee reports, administration and community development committee. Trustee Hargit.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable warrant 2022-12 in the amount of $225,010.36.
Senator. Any discussion on the warrant? Roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
The next one is a discussion item, and so wanted to bring to the board that EDC has been working on an updated strategy for economic development. So, back in 2010, the EDC had developed what they referred to as the necessity for change document that kind of set the direction for the next five years. They had set some targets for where they wanted to take sales tax growth, different activities to do. So, that went from 2010 to 2015. Then, we kicked off the comprehensive plan for the village, and that had a number of things identified for economic development that were completed, but that kind of served. It's time, there are still kind of large overarching things that carried through as themes into this plan, but the group looked, you know, there was kind of this disruption of COVID and then said, okay, now let's regather ourselves, let's recombobulate and point forward. And so, did some fairly in-depth trend analysis. It is really helpful that EDC has an economist that volunteers as part of that committee. So, Fred Seaman, who's on the EDC as well as the PZB, is an economist by trade, and so he was able to help look at some of our trend data and then ran different calculations that say, okay, well, if the market were to just keep doing what it's doing, here's where we think it would be, you know, five years from now. If we were to have some of these interventions in here, what do we think is realistic growth? And so, that's where those numbers came from that were set as targets in that plan. And the idea is, in the appendix, is the action plan for this year. And so, the plan is that every year, they will update that appendix document, say, okay, here's what we intend to do in 2024, 2025. So, there are, in the 2023 document, you'll see it broken into kind of different priority areas, but looking at things like, there are some things that are direct marketing, there are some things that are actual development or redevelopment, and the parcels are identified there and kind of prioritized. And then there's some things that are in this additional category of policy systems and environments. That's looking at code. There are some that were highlighted, like short-term rentals or air BMEs, and what do we want to do with that? They're actively looking at that right now and looking at what other communities are doing, looking at things like our sign code, right? So, there are a number of things highlighted that are all feeding towards that goal that is said of ultimately increasing our non-residential revenues. And so, the bucket of revenues are identified there as far as sales tax, use tax, gaming revenue, cannabis revenue, or the things that aren't property tax, and trying to create additional revenue there so that we can achieve some of these, you know, capital things that we would like to do. So, they've been working over that, on that over the last several months and wanted to bring that here. I went out to you guys last month, and so wanted to see if there were any questions that you had, comments for them as they begin then working through that annual action plan.
This has been going on for how long at the EDC?
Well, this plan, like I said, it's kind of, there was the necessity for change and then the compl- so they never stopped working on things, but the focus effort to create this plan started back in the, in the fall, you know, October-ish, and worked through to get to this document. So, I will take awkward silence as agreement, and we will give that, that group meets this Thursday, and so we'll give them the direction to push forward with the action plan.
Thank you, trustee Hargit. All right, we move on to all the parks and parks. Trustee Whitmore.
Yeah, excellent. I'd like to make a motion to request to approve the HVAC preventive maintenance agreement with complete temperature system.
Senator, second. It's just, it's just as a summary, that's for the HVAC system here at Villatall. One of the things that we're trying to get back into is making sure that we're maintaining all of our equipment and all of our facilities as recommended by the manufacturers. This company has been doing servicing for this HVAC unit for quite a few years. They're very knowledgeable. It's quite a unique unit that we have.
When you say unique, you mean old. Part of the gesture. All right, roll call, please.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a movement for approval of the contractual agreement between the village and Windthorcar and independent contractors.
Senator. Any discussion on that?
We've talked about this for a while, and I think the idea that we can be a provider of facilities and not have to be the one running the event, that there's probably people who are better at running events and activities than government, and so I think this is a good opportunity.
Well, you know, just kind of seeing how things have gone over the last four years, you know, obviously, working directly with Parks Corporation, it's just that it's hard to find volunteers, it's hard to find the money sometimes just to throw events, and, you know, we've got things like Community 365, who, I mean, their prime focus is to help throw events here in the village, and I think we should rely on community organizations. You know, there's other organizations who want to take over sports or start helping us run our sports team. It's just between unable to have a full staff over at Parks and Rec and unable to find, you know, more volunteers who want to come to every single event, and I mean, it's a lot of time out of their life. I think we should kind of move more into this direction. That way, we can have, you know, fully staffed events, fully staffed sports, and then we can have better programs to really focus on facilities and giving them the best facilities for these events.
And if I just may add, this was a really good collaborative effort. It's been some months in the meeting, collaborative effort with Parks and Rec Board, with staff and with Attorney Wong, who are going to come with this, with this program. This is one of many other changes that you'll see coming for our Parks and Rec Department. At your next Village Board meeting, we've also been collaborating on a volunteer program that we've been discussing now for the last few months. I'm happy to say that we have a draft copy of it, which has been, that has been reviewed and approved through our insurance period, so that's something that we'll be presenting to the Village Board at the next Village Board meeting. That's something to kind of supplement some of the, some of the immediate needs that we have in the Parks and Rec, by making sure that we have staff that's at hand to monitor our facilities. Going back to this partnership with this, I'm sorry, with this agreement, the other highlight is that we're trying to, to get more activities for a wider age group, from younger kids to seniors. So, we're hoping to partner up with good organizations to be able to expand on the activities that we have for Parks and Rec. Having good Parks and Rec activities is a, it's a very good highlight when we're trying to market the village in general for new families.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Whitmore. All right, so I'm going to go back up to Mayor's report. Now, your roll call, Senator.
Hargit.
Aye.
Levin. McCarthy.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Whitmore.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. I'm going to go back up to discussion and action on the planning and execution of an initial vehicle replacement program financing. As we move forward with the addressing the deferred maintenance and replacement of the vehicles, the village's vehicle and facilities largely caused by the financial uncertainty of COVID-19, the village board and staff have worked diligently on a plan which identifies the immediate needs of the village departments to properly maintain operations of the village. And I'll turn this over to Nick.
I wanted to introduce Dan Barlow with Menzgero. The original presentation was made by Todd, and all of you know him, and they've been working together for about 15 years now. But we, so you had one presentation regarding the cost of debt issues, and we had a couple meetings, actually, where we went over the incentive fees. So, they want to bring all that information to you again. What we're recommending, as I had said earlier, is that we try and finance the most necessary vehicles now, and then try and address some of the most needed deferred maintenance. And again, I want to point out every city's in the same, where they deferred maintenance through COVID for the past three days, and now it's time to start addressing that. All right, thank you very much for the introduction. All right, so we, we have this presentation set up here in the, we can get this together. Does this show up on everybody's screen in front of you as well?
Yes.
Well, again, my name's Dan Barlow. Thank you for having me here this evening. The topic for this evening is comprehensive capital planning. Windthorcar's debt management approach will require integrating several different things. The most immediate is the vehicle replacement program, but then, as you look out a little bit longer term at potentially bigger ticket items, that could include building and facility needs and utility infrastructure and things of that nature. We think of comprehensive capital planning as a continual process. So, like it's showing here on the illustration, you know, it really starts with looking at what your historical needs were and the needs going forward, and then the next step is to put together several different funding strategies or solutions to achieve those objectives. That's really number three here on this illustration, and to that point specifically, we have several funding alternatives for the vehicle replacement program that we'll be going over with you this evening. Comprehensive capital planning is a continual process. Once you have your selected funding alternative in place, you want to implement that and then move forward. And then, obviously, with every good comprehensive capital plan, you want to continue to evaluate it over time as things change. Your needs will change in the future, and then also markets will change, and things that were a good decision a few years ago may not be the right decision now. See, it's a continual process going forward. All right, next slide. All right, executive summary. The bullet points in the middle there. Those really summarize the four different funding alternatives that we put together working with Mr. Narducci and Mr. Alarcon, and we'll go over the specifics of those in a few minutes. But we put together a range of different funding alternatives for your considerations you need that would cover funding for vehicle replacement for a range of different project scopes and sizes. So, 1.5 million all the way up to 3 million. We've got four different funding alternatives there for you. We also, we often get asked quite frequently about interest rates and the current market, and it's no, no surprise to anybody that interest rates have definitely trended up over the last 12 months. So, we'll, we'll look at that a little bit this evening, give you a little bit of perspective of where rates are right now and some historical perspective as well. But the message is that the current tax debt market, municipal bond supply is low and the market is stable. All right, next slide. All right, developing, executing, and initial vehicle replacement program financing. So, this slide here, this is really starting to get into the meat of it, and the message for the board is, we believe any of these financing alternatives, whether it's the 1.5 million, two, two and a half, or three million dollar funding alternative, we believe that you can, the village has ample ability to fund any of these project scopes without any incremental budgetary impact. So, if we look at the graph here at the bottom of this slide, the blue bars that you see there, that represents the annual payments on the village's existing capital leases. So, there's several capital leases outstanding, they have different payment dates and timeframes. For the fiscal year ending 2023, the annual payments, the annual debt service payments, that's both principal plus interest on those existing capital leases, was just over 400,000 per year. The colored lines here that you see, these represent what the annual payments would be for each of the different four financing alternatives. So, the green line here at the top, this would be for the $3 million vehicle replacement funding option, and if you decided to move forward with that alternative, we estimate that your annual principal and interest payments would stay at the current level that you're having here for fiscal year 2023 at just over 400,000 a year. So, that's what we mean when we say, we believe you can move forward with any of these alternatives with no incremental budgetary impact if that was the amount that you decided you needed. The annual payments obviously vary, and the 1.5 million dollar project here, the purple line down the bottom, that's approximately 250,000 per year. That line's a cumulative number, so that's your existing debt service payments plus new payments to fund the vehicle replacement program. And the next slide. We call this the financing decision matrix. It really shows the exact same information that we saw on the prior slide, just in a slightly different format. So, here on the left, you have the four different vehicle replacement funding alternatives and the range and the project sizes from 1.5 million to 3 million. This column here, TIC, that stands for true interest cost, and it's the estimated borrowing rate for the bonds based on the current market conditions, and that'd be approximately 3.5% for each of the four different alternatives you see there. Similarly, in all four of these alternatives, the final maturity of the bonds would be approximately the same 2035. The one thing that would vary is the annual debt service requirements, like you saw on the prior page, for the 1.5 million dollar alternative, approximately 250,000 per year up to approximately what you're paying right now on your existing leases, which is 410,000 per year. So, that's kind of a summary of the different alternatives. Once the board has made a decision and determines a path forward, the process can be pretty efficient, so we can have bonds sold, money in the bank within 30 to 60 days approximately. Moving on, these next slides, Nick provided these to us. Do you want to say anything, or should we continue on?
No, just continue on.
Okay. Okay, so this is detail for the individual different vehicles that would be looking at and being replaced. All right. Next slide. This goes back to the, you know, comprehensive capital planning process that we talked about with the very first slide. I'm not going to read over all the detail on this, there's a lot of writing here, but the basic message is that sound fiscal, action plans are comprehensive, detailed and disciplined, and we think vehicle replacement is a logical place to start when you're talking about your capital needs, not just today, but over the next several years, and how do you leverage into that, and where do you start? We think vehicle replacement is an obvious, is an obvious choice. Want to draw your attention here to the second arrow, implement short-term tactics. You can always buy some time with short-term tactics with long-term fiscal decisions, while long-term fiscal decisions are being made. The vehicle replacement program perceives more comprehensive financing needs. Like we said, longer term, you have utility infrastructure facility needs that are coming on down the road. This next slide here, again, a lot of, a lot of wording here, I'm not going to read everything here, but the message of this slide is that credit ratings matter. It's kind of rhetorical. You know, in our personal finances, we have our own, you know, financial scores. It's no different for the village. You have a bond rating, or you have had a bond rating in the past, and as you start to move forward with capital planning and financing, you'll probably get that bond rating updated again. What this slide shows down here is credit spreads for different types of rated issuers and the messages. The better your bond rating, the lower interest rate, so what you'll pay when you go to complete a financing.
Currently, we're not bond rated, correct?
I believe your last rating was from Moody's, and it was in the A range, and that was from several years ago. I believe that the bond issue that applied to is no longer outstanding, so that rating is...
I believe that was for the school district.
For the school district?
Yes.
I don't know that the school district has ever had a bond rating. I've been here since 97, and we've never done it to my own.
So, this may be the first time to complete that process. You know, part of, part of the thing that they look at, they look at financial management and your financial performance over the last several years. They also look at what types of policies and procedures you have in place. You know, having a comprehensive capital plan is, is an aspect to that. Then, obviously, they also look at the local demographics and the tax base and things of that nature. So, there's things that you can control, like your financial management practices. There's things like the demographics and the tax base that are a little bit outside of your control, but the, the message is credit ratings matter in the current environment, and this will probably be a topic that comes up, maybe not necessarily for the vehicle replacement financing, but as you progress during the capital funding process, this topic will probably come up again.
Is a, is a bond rating required then prior to, for, for this type of debt?
No. That's not... Not necessarily.
And you're getting your foot in the door because we're coming out of stone ages finally, thank God, and we're doing this. It's like when you go to the bank, you have no credit, it's worse than bad credit. Bad credit people can get loans. No credit people can't get anything either. My kids starting out always face that. Don't, if you have never had any, then you can have bad credit and get more money loaned to you than a person with no credit. So, I think this is great that we're getting our foot in the door and we're finally coming out of stone ages and getting this. God forbid nothing bad happens, but we need to establish this, I believe, just to, to moving forward in case something does happen.
Would a reserve study be like a capital plan where they would, let's say, do a reserve study, you, let's say, your whole infrastructure, everything that you have? Because I know that when I was in this process, that a reserve study was critical for them to see how are you going to handle all your capital improvements?
When you say reserve study, are you talking about like a policy for maintaining a certain particular reserve level for your different operating funds?
Right. The reserve study, they go through the whole facility, and they say, your windows have another 10-year lifespan on it, you're going to need to replace it in 10 years, here's the mom and dollars, it's going to possibly cost. And if you go with that, I know that in the building that I manage, it was a multimillion dollar building, that when we went out for loans, they said, what's your reserve study look like? You know, and they look at that and they saw, oh, okay, this is what you're funding.
So, the, the level of reserves is a critical aspect of the rating process, absolutely. As you're going through the rating process, they'll, they'll look at your historical reserve levels, whether that's a written policy like you're referring to, or that they'll look at prior audits and they'll say, okay, they're maintaining reserves at, you know, at X level. The higher your reserves in general, the better it is where you're rating. You know, there's a certain level at which if you keep reserves above, you know, let's say, above 100% of your annual expenditures, that, you know, maybe that's too high. There's a certain level where it's, you know, sometimes people look and say, well, are the tax rates too high? Why are these reserve levels so high? Are they, you know? So, I think there's an optimal level, but, you know, 25% fund balance, 30%, that's a very solid level, very well-rated issuers can be higher than that, 40, 50% for their operating funds. So, the thinking about the appropriate reserve level is very critical as part of this process. The rating agencies, we'll, we'll give you extra credit, we'll put it this way, we'll give you extra credit if we have a written policy. But you know, a lot of municipalities may not have a written policy, maybe there's a more informal policy, and the administration knows that the expectation of keeping reserves at, you know, 25% of operating expenditure, something like that. Good question. Anything else?
On those levels on that one, sorry, the alternate, alternative 1, 2, 3, 4, the 1.5, 2 million, 2.5, 3 million, you got the, take us page 15. The tick is 3.5 on all of them. Is that, is that, no, then would that bond, you know, a bond rating change that?
So, for the 3.5%, I, we, we looked at, we took a quick look at some of your finances because we had to make an estimate here for running these funding alternatives. I think we assumed a bond rating that would come out somewhere in the A, in the A range, and that would be in line with the 3.5% estimate.
So, if that, bond rating goes up, that will go down.
Correct.
Correct.
The other thing I should say is this estimate, the three and a half percent, that's based on current market levels.
Exactly.
That rate could go up or down depending on what happens in the market until you actually go and sell the bond. When you sell the bonds, you're locking into rate. This is our best estimate at this point in time. That's if we're at A right now. Correct, if you're at A. And I think a rating in the A range is probably very achievable.
The other one I wanted to mention is this issue was going to be, was called a negotiated deal. And these guys will work with the banks to try and get our lowest rating. If you're really not ready to go to the credit rating agencies, your financials have to be in order, you've got two quality audits, it's probably not a good time to do that. But these guys looking at the financials to put on the bank and say, well, these guys, there's a credit risk, we have some accounting issues we got to take care of, but a good credit risk here. And the other thing is when it does come time for you to go to S and P or Moody's, it's always good. If you could show them, well, we have a real estate policy on paid debt and also new projects as we cover carpet as you go. It's good to be able to do both. So this is going to prepare us probably a little bit better. Once we get the audit in shape and, you know, the budget in a more understandable position to go before those credit rating agencies and say, okay, now we're ready to go.
And just one last, one thing to add to your comments too. It's going to give us the opportunity to also take a look at our policies and kind of tighten up our financial policies to make sure that it's to the standards of these financial institutions.
And that'll play a very important role in this.
Absolutely.
Thank you, David, for answering that because I wasn't sure why that was three and a half on all of those levels and how that fluctuates.
On that topic, one last thing. So the maturity rating of the different funding alternatives, they have also played into the rating. So we're assuming final maturity for all these in two thousand and thirty-five. So if you did a financing that went out longer than...
Sorry, my next question.
Would likely be higher. And on the flip side, if the financing was shorter, the rate would probably be lower. Thank you. Okay, just a few slides left here. And actually, this leads in very well to the few slides we have here at the end is a market update slides for you. Let's focus here on the graph at the top of, what is it? It's page thirteen. But let's focus here on the graph at the top of page thirteen. And in particular, you know, there's a lot of different colored lines here on the graph. Let's look specifically at this yellow colored line at the top. What that represents, that's the tax exempt high-grade interest rate index. So this is essentially the interest rate on high-grade tax exempt bonds. And what it shows here is how that rate has fluctuated over the past several years. So, and bear with me, here one second, these numbers are small. All right. So here at the very left-hand side of the graph, the rate is approximately two percent that you see there. That was in July of twenty sixteen. And then you can see how the rate has fluctuated up and down over the last several years. This, I'll call this blip of volatility here, this was in March and April of two thousand and twenty. And that was the pandemic. You know, there's a lot of volatility in the market at that point in time. That died down relatively quickly. And at that time, the Federal Reserve enacted some monetary policies that pushed interest rates very low because they were trying to support, support the economy. So you can see that over the next approximately year and a half, from, you know, call it July of two thousand and twenty, up until January of two thousand and twenty-two. And that's when concerns about inflation really, you know, came to the forefront and was on everybody's mind. And so since that point in time, Federal Reserve, they've been hiking short-term rates. That's also period over to the tax exempt market as you see here. And we definitely have had an increase in interest rates since approximately December, January of two thousand and twenty-two. Where we are right here today, you'll see the yellow line, I think the date there is March two thousand and twenty-three, that yellow line is right around three and a half percent.
Three and a half.
In that time span, to the prior slide.
Do you project that going down or coming up or staying about the same? Or do you not know?
You know...
You're the expert.
Crystal law.
I have no crystal law. A lot of people, of course, see, you know, potential for some type of recession over the next year. If that comes to fruition, you might see the Federal Reserve, you know, if they feel like they have inflation in check, you might see rates coming down from that. But, you know, the market's proved me wrong so many times. You really never know what might happen. It could be a year from now and rates are higher for all we know. So unfortunately, I don't have a great answer to that question. Your guess is probably as good as mine. So did I, unfortunately. But the message here from a current and then historical perspective, yes, tax exempt interest rates have definitely increased from the low points that they were, you know, in the aftermath of COVID. But also, if you look over more of a longer historical timeline, we're really not too far away from some of the periods here in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So the message is if you do have core capital needs that need to be financed, it's not a bad time to move forward with that. The last thing I will mention here, that's around this slide. So this gray area, you see the, you see the gray shaded area and then that's below kind of stair step.
Yes.
Looking thing. So what is that? That's the federal funds rate. And then that's the, that's the very short-term, like one day lending rate essentially for the Federal Reserve. And they adjust that rate to try to affect rates throughout the whole entire economy. And so you see beginning in, what is that? I believe that's March two thousand and twenty-two. Every, every six weeks, the Fed has a meeting and they've hiked that federal funds rate each meeting. Until here we are today with the federal funds rate, which is a short-term taxable rate. If you do this vehicle replacement financing, you'll be borrowing at tax exempt rates. This federal funds rate reflects a taxable interest rate and it's just below five percent. Short-term U.S. Treasuries, you know, T-bills, T-noats that mature three months, six months, you know, twelve months from now, they're very closely tied to this federal funds rate. So stepping back for a moment, the thing to think about here is if you have vehicle replacement needs that need to be financed. You know, obviously, I can't tell you the amount. You got to decide what the appropriate amount of funding is that's needed. But I will say, this is a unique market opportunity you have right here. Because if you do a vehicle replacement funding, you're not going to spend all that money on day one. You know, you might spend some immediately, but then some spending city in a project fund for maybe six months, twelve months, you know, Nick could tell us better than I. What municipalities are doing right now is they're, you know, smart municipalities are investing those project proceeds in short-term treasuries. And in many cases, you might be able to burn, what, your borrowing rate on the bonds perhaps even above it. So, so there's something to be said, if there's a certain project funding amount that you're looking at. There may be some economies of scale rather than breaking it up into a financing this year and then we'll do another half next year. You know, you may consider doing it all now and, you know, look at when you're planning to spend those project proceeds and then invest accordingly. And what that effectively does is it blends down borrowing rate. So that's how municipalities are managing the increase in interest rates by carefully managing project proceeds while they're waiting to be spent.
Can you address the refunding capacity for this particular financing vehicle? You're talking about how they can protect it, hedge against the risk that the interest rates will drop and will have borrowed at a higher rate.
So absolutely, when you go and sell municipal bonds, what's frequently included in that is what they call a call option. And basically, it's like when you have your mortgage and you, there's no prepayment penalty, you can pay it off anytime you want. With a municipal bond, there's usually a certain period of time when you're restricted from paying it back. But the common period is approximately ten years. That's kind of standard call option. Basically, it gives investors some assurance that they're going to be able to hold those bonds and get that yield for some period of time. So ten years is kind of the standard call option. With the final maturity date in two thousand and thirty-five, you'd likely have a call option on your bond issue. I've had some clients who have wanted a shorter call option because they feel like it's likely that interest rates might come down in a couple of years. Maybe they know they have another financing coming on down the road and they want the ability to refinance and restructure at that time if they want to. So when you do a call option that's shorter than kind of the normal ten-year period, there is usually a little bit of interest rate penalty, although these days it isn't very high. So we did a financing that closed in December for Central Illinois Regional Airport in Bloomington, Normal. They did about a seven-year financing and they had a call option on that that was eighteen months ahead of lead. So that cost them a little bit in terms of yield premium. So instead of, let's say the rate on their bonds is four percent, with that shorter call option, maybe it was four point two five percent, something like that. But it was their viewpoint that, you know, if we go into a recession down the road and rates decrease, plus they had other financings coming down down the road, they want the ability to refinance. So certainly, an option you would have, and we look at that very closely with Nick and David and, you know, try to determine what the optimal call feature would be. Thank you. So I think that pretty much brings us to the end here. Slide fourteen, this was just interest rate historical look back. Very similar data to what you had on the prior page. I don't think I need to go through this. I'll pause there unless Nick or David, I don't know, you have comments or if there's other questions.
Now, if there's any more questions, certainly go ahead and ask those. But as I indicated from the beginning, this, what we're looking for is a one point five million dollar issue. And that'll fit in with budget projections for twenty twenty-four neatly because the debt is going to decrease. The payments are going to decrease a lot more than these interest payments and these debt service payments. And then we purchased those vehicles that were listed, the eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars of the most ethical. And we're recommending that the balance of that go into the facility fund, which we're creating this year. And then there'll be some projects that will be recommended in budget time to use that for. The balance of that will fall into fund balance through the budget for the next year on the facility side. Facility is just for maintenance and we're trying to get to. And again, these are vehicles that are very critical needs to be used. So we'd be looking for that recommended, our recommendation is that we do the one point five. And we split the money off as we indicated, twenty vehicles on the facilities.
Do you want to touch base on what we envision on facilities, just in general?
Yeah, on the facility side, your public works building needs a look. It's a sixty-year-old, it's a fifty-year life. If you're doing some improvements out there, that will have to be done in the future. That's over a hundred thousand dollars, I'm sure. The HVAC system for this building needs to be looked at, again, deferred. Your parking lots all need to be sealed, correct them. And then they've been done for a while, you have the lot properties and a lot of open area where that has to be done, including this building. And the equipment is so many of the improvements, we've been referring that for a number of years. And then the lighting at the parking lot, particularly at the shade, maybe kind of a dangerous area there. And then there's a chance to get some gratifying. We could use an addition to this money to get that project done. So those are the basic ones. Yeah, those are the basic ones that we'd like to get done quickly. And that's about two hundred and, well, of course, probably about three hundred and some thousand dollars. Yeah, just over three.
We've been losing money. We've lost money not purchasing cars. We lost money not building our building when I wanted to build it because we were waiting. Everybody wants to wait. Everybody wants to wait. Keep waiting. Everybody's waiting. We keep waiting. We've lost so much money waiting. I think it's prevalent here. I hope these people are watching all this stuff because we have waited for so long. We're creating holes by waiting. They had a great deal. The ambulance we had to cry about just to get that great deal. They had a great deal and the vehicles that we could have had way better deal than we're going to get now. We've been waiting for so long and we did not have this out. We need to do something. It's kind of, like I said, we're in the stone ages. We're not looking ahead, not looked ahead. I've been on this board for a while too, but it's never been presented that way and it's never been looked at that way. It's always been, we're just going to save money, we're going to save money, we're going to save money. Well, by saving money, we've cost ourselves a lot of money. And it's, we can look at it. I could show you it. I'm not that good with that kind of stuff, but I'll tell you, I've seen it. So it's time that we're doing something to get ahead of ourselves to not create debt later. So as I keep saying that, I've said since I got elected, when that east side goes down with sewer water, you know, you're trying to, you're looking at some big money bonds we're taking on. It ain't going to be no what we're doing right now. So people know it's there in front of us. We just have to take action and do it the right way.
The vehicle and equipment list under public works, the twenty twenty-three Falcon, that's the hot box?
Yes.
And that is in the one point five that's recommended?
This was part of the eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, I purchased twenty-four.
Did you guys get that loaner one that you're going to test?
We did.
Yeah.
For two weeks, it was phenomenal.
Yeah.
Phenomenal. It really did a good job. And you see the potential of what we could do in terms of permanent patching?
Yeah.
And we can't obviously just curb the curb patching. But, you know, areas that you can do an eight-by-eight patch or, you know, a six-by-eight or a four-by-twelve, you know, the curb lines that the garbage truck was tearing up on the east side. You know, that's absolutely perfect for it. And it's going to go into cold patching in the winter, you know, so we can talk about hot patch, permanent patches in the summer. But this will take us into, you know, December and early March, when you can get out hot holding versus what we're doing now. Where's the, where's some of the patches we put in when you have that? All of them down our primary roads, Thompson from Fourth Street to, say, line, sorry, Eleventh Street from Lewis Avenue to Sharon Road. Monroe was hit, Robert Ford was hit, all the way to Old Darby.
Were you able to do all that in the two-week period that you had?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, it was good. We spent a lot of time out there.
Yeah.
Obviously, we know we're all not done, but, you know, we need to get out. I do plan on reaching out to him when I put into my budget just for that. Because obviously, lead time, I could order it tomorrow morning if he said go, but it's still not going to be here till October, you know. So, but I have looked into renting one for two months for the summer, you know, just to be able to jump on this because we know our road condition. So it worked really well. It's really worth the forty thousand dollars that we're going to spend.
And I think for the, it's a hundred percent needed and we've been wanting this, I think, for a long time.
Correct.
But I think there's also a risk in vehicle replacement of people seeing things like, oh, look at those shiny new vehicles they're driving. When are you going to do something about our roads and being able to offset that a little bit? Yeah, we know we need to do a lot more with the roads and we're working towards that, but now we've got this additional tool in our tool belt and...
And that's absolutely how I've explained it to residents that we called this spring. I mean, obviously, this spring has been tough.
Yeah.
But it's exactly how, you try to explain it to them and you try to say, hey, we're expanding and constraining our dollar as far as we possibly can. And this is something we've wanted for a while. We're taking advantage of it. We used it for two weeks for nothing, you know, and I think we went through forty tons? No, no, I take that back. That's too high. I'm sorry. Twenty tons of coal mix just filling potholes that'll last longer because they're three hundred degrees instead of sixty degrees, you know. So it's absolutely, and we're going to look to rent one for a couple of months this summer.
And think how many more patches you fill if we didn't have the branch pickup.
It's probably a great idea.
Get everybody on with that. You guys are getting on board with that. Get on board with the old people. I'm telling you right by the camera.
I think the thing that we really need to really look at is this one point five million at a certain set of interest rate. Instead of having all these blue interest rates that we have, it's killing us right now. We're spending an extraordinary amount of money that we don't need to do. We're spending an extra amount of money that we don't need to do where we can now take this money because we've got this set interest rate for this amount, period, and we can save in that way and take that money and spend it for its use.
And we're not going to kill ourselves at the next budget. They knew their numbers right. Okay?
Just want to add one last thing here. When you do the capital plan, one of the best ideas, you would probably agree with me, is make sure the money you have locked away, that you can't use it for ordinary budget stuff. But that's one of the keys to making this project actually viable. If you don't carefully lock the money away, it can be used for, you know, negotiations, for instance, it can be spent on, as we've seen in the past, expenditures that aren't necessarily completely transparent. And you want to make sure that whatever money is put into reserves has to be voted on and has to be specifically and intentionally expended from those funds. Doesn't mean they're not available, doesn't mean that you can't use them, but it does mean you have to be very careful about how you're doing it. And that will, if you violate your own policy of locking the money up, it's going to affect your vibrating, it's going to affect your ability to borrow money in the future. So these are all factors that have to fit together. They have to fit together seamlessly and transparently to make sure that people can be, you know, citizens that are paying for all of this can be reasonably assured that the money that the village board is entering into debt service for and not obliging them to pay over a long period of time will effectively be used for the purposes that it's being part of.
Dave, Nick and I had that conversation today.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we're going to do that.
Yeah, we've had some policies in the past that were well followed, that's the key to my concern.
I think the 1.5 is needed, is a reasonable approach and excited to see it move forward. To trustee Maravella's point earlier, to get out of the Stone Age.
Tell you, make a motion.
Are we voting, are we taking action on this tonight or?
That's accurate.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the 1.5 million as presented.
I will sign it. I've got two on that.
To be clear, you will end up having to vote on the actual filing, right?
Yes.
And the rest of the stuff. This is a voting principle.
There will likely be a couple of steps to the, for the formal approval process. The final step will be adoption of an actual bond ordinance. And then these will likely be done as alternate revenue source bonds, if you're familiar with that term. Usually there is a bond disqualification act hearing as part of that process. And then that leaves up to the adoption of the bond resumption.
So we'll take a few steps.
Yeah.
First. Doc, always let take them. But good, good call, reasonable. Yeah, motion second. Roll call.
Target?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Maravella?
Aye.
Sorry, I was late.
Hi.
Whitmore?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you for having me.
Just a background of mayor's report, just a couple of things I wanted to say. We lost a great Waltham Harbor leader, Dick Grogard. Dick passed away this past weekend. Dick served the community in many roles, including the Waltham Harbor Fire Department and as a trustee on the Waltham Harbor Village Board. Dick's service and dedication to this community set the foundation for Waltham Harbor today. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family. We are all thankful for Dick's contribution to Waltham Harbor. When I became a trustee in '05, I sat right where Dana's sitting right now and Dick sat right where Buddy sits right now. And after the meeting on that first night, I was sworn in. He came up to me and put his arm around me and he said, Mike, if there's ever any questions on, you know, you knew on the board, if there's ever any questions, if you have anything that you don't understand, please talk to me. And I talked to him numerous times and every time I talked to him, he always had an answer. If he didn't have it, he got it, he gave it to me. But he was quite a guy. And then when I became mayor in 2017, there were three or four, maybe even five times he came in and he saw my car up front, came and sat in my office for down there an hour and just talked. He was a great guy. I give him a lot of credit because, you know, he knew a lot and he was here, how many terms was he on the board? Four terms?
Twenty years.
Five terms?
Five terms.
Five terms, so 20 years.
I think when he finished his last term, at that time, I think he was the longest time trustee.
Right.
For that one time.
Yeah, I mean, he was phenomenal. I respect him and was great, grateful to see him when he walked in my office. I didn't shake his hand and give him a hug, you know, because that's just the kind of guy he was. So I'm going to miss him deeply, but I did call his wife today and extended anything that the village could do for her, would help her in any way. Working on putting together a nice comment, you know, information about all that Dick did. Contacted some former mayors and former trustees and they're going to work on putting together something. And I asked her if we could put it in on Facebook and didn't know what she'd say. She goes, that would be great because, you know, it would get out to everybody and I've shared on my mayor's Facebook page as well. So she's very grateful and really appreciative of all that. So I just wanted to let everyone know that. The next item, Easter events. I'd like to special thanks to Community 265, Alliance Club, Parks and Rec Board and volunteers for their help in our Easter celebration. The event was very great. Thanks to the Easter bunny for his contribution too. Another item...
That was a very regal-looking Easter bunny. I saw like the one that had the big eyes and the smiling face.
By the way, I showed the Easter bunny to my grandsons in Utah because I saw that on Facebook.
Wow! They really liked the bunny. And I said, I know him personally, he doesn't lay eggs either. So he does have a side chick.
One other item, I did contact Dave, who's the new manager down at Sun Text or whoever it's called now. I don't want to say West Track, I know it's not Western, but Farmer's Market is going to happen this summer. In '02, I've communicated to date, just working out the details of when it's going to be and when it's going to start and what day it's going to be on. So that's all something that I wanted to continue to move forward on. I mean, we'll include site of that. So that's all I have. So move down to, oh, yeah, the Welcome Home. I don't have that on my notes. So the Village of Waltham Harbor Welcome Home Expo is intended to assist our residents, homeowners and businesses, business owners by presenting manufacturers, contractors and suppliers for property improvements, further consultation and consideration, including, but not limited to driveways, patios, decks, porches, garages, sheds, additions, windows, doors, roofs and more. Whether you are looking to spruce up your property or give it a complete makeover, the Welcome Home Expo will help you to meet and speak with qualified licensed and insured companies and contractors who can assist you with your home improvement goal. This is on April 22nd, Saturday, April 22nd, later voting from 11:00 AM, 13:00. Sanjay, tell me some of the people that will be there. I don't have that list.
The list is growing daily. Common old Edison will be there. Our village fire department will have a table to talk about fire safety in the home. Our village police department will be there to talk about home safety procedures. The Benton Township Assessor's Office will be there to talk about assessments and tax preparation for property taxes and how those are established. Anderson Windows will have a table to talk about their products. We've just heard back from Menards today and hopefully they will be a part of the expo as well. Several local contractors have signed up to participate, including North Star Heating and Cooling as well as some of our local contractors. So we're very excited about this. This is the first year we're doing something like this, but so far the response has been really tremendous, very positive.
Great. Thanks. All right. So we're done with the entire agenda. We just move on down to public comments. If there's anybody who would like to address the board? Tim?
No.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
He's hearing a little.
Okay. All right, so we'll go down, finish business. I'll start down right, go with trustee Maravella.
Sorry for being late.
No, it's okay.
I had something come up. Other than that, I'm excited we're going down to state. Some stuff in public works.
Next Tuesday evening, yes.
I know we're doing, like Tim said, we're getting along at public works. They're fixing the chopper, getting all the chains on that, doing our new guy doing the maintenance on our stuff now, so we're getting prepared. It'll be a busy time just because everything going with roads and everything else and we're still down in there. So we're still waiting for that person to come. But other than that, I think we're doing good with what we have. We're still finishing our project over there. Had a few electrical issues on the south side there that were handling, that line got hit over there, but other than that, everything's good. Baseball season is coming soon, so pretty prepared to watch out for the little ones running around. That's all I got.
Thank you, trustee Maravella.
My condolences to the Wilbur family. I was fortunate enough to see Dick on Chappelle's Day, a nice conversation and a smile on his face. We're talking about Sunday.
My condolences to the Wilbur's family. Matter of fact, Dick and I became trustees at the same time in the late 90s. And it was between him and I who would close out the session to see who could say, so moved the fastest. So he would be sitting where you're sitting, buddy, and we would look at each other and then the mayor would say, do I have a motion? And we'd see who could say it the fastest, so, yeah, but, yeah, he's going to be missed.
Yeah. Thank you, trustee Hart.
Yeah, my condolences to the Wilbur family. I think my experience was almost identical. I think that may have been his move when someone got on the board, right? It was, he got the arm around you and say, hey, I'm here. We were grabbing coffee with him a number of times or breakfast and picking his brain, especially when I first got on the board. And he was a wealth of knowledge and served the village, you know, feeling like every way that he could. So, yeah, definitely missed and a lasting impression out of him, it seemed.
Thank you, trustee Hart.
Yeah, I have a few things. Obviously, I'll add to the Compton trustee Grogard. It was great in my first six years sitting next to him and then, you know...
Money comes with him.
No, I kid. But one thing that I thought was very cool was, you know, when Kyle Wendell first came in for the license for Harbor Brewing, I think trustee Grogard was one of the few people on the board who didn't know Kyle at all, had no idea, you know, who he was. And, you know, just him coming in, those sparks that, you know, that Dick loved the home brewing and everything. And, you know, the last four years, you know, you see the pictures online, having a great time over there brewing with him. So I just thought that was really cool, you know, you got to spend that time. And it happened, you know, like I said, just because he was, you know, on his board and did that, so, you know, just, yeah, he'll be missed. Just thanks to Dave and Nick and everybody who's been working on, you know, the vehicle replacement program and really the capital improvement plan coming up as a way for us to really do these things in a sustainable way. And I echo what was mentioned, you know, during the discussions by trustee Maravella and others. And it's just, it's been an amazing learning process for us, you know. A lot of us have been here a long time and not, you know, kind of realized, you know, some of these things and how we should be doing them, you know. And there's a part of it that's a little embarrassing, but at the same time, it's empowering to know that, you know, we can move forward and do some good things and do it the right way. So appreciate that. I wanted to congratulate the winners of the election, so our re-elected trustees, trustee Weiss and trustee Whitmore and trustee Lex Braden. So congrats on their hard fought campaigns.
Hard fought?
Yeah, joking there. Just a reminder too, again, about yard waste pickup. For anyone who's watching, that, you know, through, you know, end of October is it, you can put up to six units of yard waste out with the trash. We still, we still have so many people who don't know that that's offered by our group, so I think it's always good to remind them. And since you mentioned Community 365 and what they've been doing, I will mention that they're doing a trivia fundraiser this Friday night. I will be the quiz master and MC, so...
At the Moos.
At the Moos Lodge, yes, Friday night. So tell your friends they can sign up, come play some trivia and have some fun.
Is there a theme or general trivia or whatever you decide that night?
It's whatever I decide. Not that night.
He's tricky, let me tell you.
I take a lot of pride in it. I worked hard to get some good questions.
He doesn't make it easy. Well, that's it. I have a question on how many a table? If you want to have a table.
It's eight at a table.
If anybody can put together eight, I'll pay for the table. Because I'm going to be out of town. Couldn't be there and I couldn't find anybody that loves trivia.
Well, Sanjay's probably excited that I'm not playing this time, you know, so he's got a chance at winning when I'm not playing.
Oh, yeah, that was a micro-nation. Thank you, trustee Whitmore.
Yeah, you know, my condolences to the Wilbur's family. I'll definitely miss our very long conversations about just throwing up, you know, ideas at him and, you know, seeing what his thoughts are. He's a wealth of knowledge, just not even in the village, just, you know, across every avenue. So he'll definitely, definitely be missed. Thank you for everyone who participated in our Easter events all day. Thank you for our Easter bunny. That was a great time. You know, we had a really great turnout, great weather, so that always helped. We had our Parks and Rec meeting last night. We have a lot of new events and programs coming. Programs are huge, you know, obviously we don't have a lot of businesses geared towards younger kids or, you know, even just middle, you know, middle-aged individuals. So we're really trying to bring in a lot of yoga sessions and activities just to kind of keep the village more engaged and more of that townhome community feel. And then we also have some bigger events coming up too. So we're really hoping to attract people from other areas to bring them into Waltham Harbor and then obviously to really give our residents something to do and, you know, something to look forward to.
Thank you, trustee Whitmore. Okay. Yes, the next item is I need a motion to...
So moved.
Sorry.
It's already been moved.
Sorry, I'm low. You're done. Chief? Roll call.
Yeah.
Just one real quick question. For those of you who were able to log into the new device, the new trial device that we put on there, so you can see the presentation from your laptops, to get some feedback, is that something that you guys would like to see continuing as presentations?
I would say no from him because he couldn't get on it.
Yeah, we couldn't. I couldn't get on it.
We have to work out the gate. I didn't, I couldn't get on it.
So make it better.
Yeah. The link was great.
So moved. All right, roll call.
Target?
What?
Levin? Maravella? McCarty?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Whitmore?